Call the meeting to order, any items from the public. Mr. Dennis, you want to be our public today and say anything?
No, sir. Thank you for the opportunity.
All righty, well, thank you. Let's see, can I have a motion to approve the agenda if there's no modifications or changes?
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, purchase order log, any questions for Tracy?
No.
No internal budget revisions, no change in status this week. Approval of the minutes, the August 22nd, everybody was present, so we can leave them alone. And we have a canceled check request from the clerk's office. Bond release. We have a bond release for Rutter Store 95, grading permit, BCP file number 030-19.
Is that the one in Hedgesville?
Harlem Springs, yeah. Let's see, it's tied to 2010-0126 and 2301-006, bond which is BP 12142900062. And engineering has made that recommendation. And a bond reduction for Pebble Ridge, section five, phase three F, final plat, BCP file number 2207-195, tied to BCP file 2406-159, and let's see, as well as 2105-174, 2309-335, and 63-04, and R00500-15. Letter of credit which is 9000367, and engineering department has made that recommendation. Any questions for Doug?
Good to go.
All righty, sir, thank you. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And now we have the Honorable Larry Hess here with 24 personal tax exonerations and apportionment and an application of consolidation. Gave it all there for you. Except for I left the amounts for you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I do have 24 personal property exonerations to bring this morning, and most of them are, as we had last week, still a lot of those double billed ones we're cleaning up, and but the 24 of them total up all of them for the reasons that's listed there, we have a total of $4,429.19 for those 24.
Okay, you've heard the request, do I have a motion for the 24 personal tax exonerations for office heir?
Yes, Mr. President, the motion to accept the 24 personal property exonerations in the amount of $4,429.19.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And we have a apportionment of assessment for taxes per final divorce.
Yes, sir, we do. For Jacob Jastin and his wife, which his name's not listed there, but they had four vehicles.
She's listed, Erica R. Jastin Turner.
Okay.
She's the next one down.
They had four vehicles, total assessed value of $30,240, and we split the vehicles up so they could get a separate bill, and just need your approval on that today.
Mr. President, I'll move to accept the apportionment of assessment of taxes per final divorce order.
Hey, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries, and one application of consolidation of the property.
Yes, sir. Connor Living Trust had two parcels in the following waters district, MAP 3D, one of the parcels 20, and the other one's 22, and they just want to put it together so they could get just one tax bill, so I need your approval on that today.
Sounds good. Do I have a motion for the consolidation of property?
I move that we accept the application of consolidation of property as mentioned by our assessment.
Second.
All righty, motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries, sir. Thank you. Board of meeting reports, Mr. Boyd.
I didn't have any meetings this week.
All right, Mr. Barnhart.
Mr. Boyd and I were together all week, because I didn't have any meetings either.
Wow. Mr. Kattler.
Give us a rundown on the...
I'll talk about Labor Day.
Yeah.
We had a great breakfast, great weather, had plenty of help. I guess the most notarized helper was the potential governor of West Virginia, Patrick Morrissey was there. We appreciated him and a lot of other individuals running for office, but also the nucleus of people that come year in and year out that helped, and just a wonderful day. We probably had about 40 volunteers there. I want to give kudos out to Faith Christian Academy and Jen Staley and the kids that come from there, they just do a great job for us. Everyone, we've got cooks and had Eddie running around picking up steaks at 6:30 in the morning. We had just a really good morning, hit 470 paid people. We fed that many, we probably sold over 500 tickets, and probably going to generate, I guess, just off the breakfast alone, about $15,000 net is our hope, and should be. Plus, there was a match going on for contributions over the ticket price. We had a donor that was matching each dollar, so they did that several years ago and it generated an extra $12,000, so hopefully we'll get close to that again. So the project at the breakfasts, the funds are going towards is replacing the Hollow Pavilion at Womack Memorial Park. There are six pavements in the park, and this is the last one that needs to be replaced. And so, once it's replaced, the rest are, most of them are, of course, the all metal pavements that we have that will last for years and years. This one will be an all metal pavilion as well. So wonderful morning, we appreciate again everyone that participated, bought tickets, helped, whatever, made a successful day, so thank you very much. Richard Dennis is there serving coffee all morning and drinks, and he's been coming out for years now, we appreciate that, so...
I wonder how many to-gos were there? Did you ever keep that count, to-go boxes?
No, but I can tell you, we purchase about, I purchase 100 of those things...
Starphone?
To start with, well, I actually go with the eco kind now, so they sell...
Biodegradable.
Biodegradable, so, but we probably went through 30 some, 30 to 40. There's a lot of people that get a breakfast to go, you know? Or they'll come, like I know my sister, her husband wasn't with her, so she took one home with her.
That's what I was curious about.
Yeah, so it, but it was a great morning. The other thing I wanted to mention, and I have procrastinated on this, but I was asked, we were asked on the board of directors of the CCA to try to sell an ad for their new directory they're coming up with, and obviously with a, with a lot of people changing office, a new directory lists all the state senators, all the state delegates, the whole shebang. And they're asking each county to sell at least one ad, a full page of $700, $750, I guess, a half page is 500, and I think they can do a full page. If you know any business that you think might do it, I just, you know, it's a statewide thing, so I don't know if we could find somebody that would be willing to place an ad in the directory or not, but they're asking us to try at least to sell one ad, so. We've got a couple weeks left, the deadline is September 20th. I only knew about this months ago, so I just...
September 20th.
I tried to blame it on Gary at the dinner, they asked me at dinner, have you got an ad sold yet? I said, I don't know, I think I talked to Gary about it.
So it's a statewide publication or for the county commissioners?
It's the registry of all the county commissioners.
Of all the commissioners, and it has all the commissioners across the state. I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
I said delegates instead.
It's one for all the commissioners across the state. Of course, once the election's over, there'd be a whole new list of them.
I've got an idea too.
They publish about 500 copies of it.
Already in there?
Yeah, okay. So anyway, if you come up with something over the next couple weeks, let us know and we'll try to get some money down there and get an ad to the county's office. And so I had meetings Tuesday night, and I had oral surgery going on that day, so I missed my meetings at the water storm order and tour meetings.
All righty. That it?
Yes, sir.
Ready?
Yes, Mr. President, obviously you know that we were on the radio Tuesday morning at WRNR, and it's always a good discussion with them, I appreciate that. And I was able to attend the day report construction meeting yesterday, I was not able to attend the health department, Gary will give us a brief on that one, but on the day report, they'll be starting the elevator on Monday. But on the day report, they'll be starting the elevator on Monday, that will start that process. They're continually painting, doing the ceiling grids, getting those, getting the building buttoned down and grading this week and prepare for asphalt in the parking lot. So a lot of things going on there. I think that they're doing a really a nice job on that.
It looks really nice, you know, the outside looks really nice.
But they've done a really a good job there, so that's coming along nicely.
Yeah. And the.
When's the potential occupancy on that?
First October.
First of October.
Yeah. Probably middle, I think, now. They're going to release it to us early October. We won't be in it. The furniture has to come as soon as they're clean. And then the health department project, still early stages, they've got subgrade done. They'll start footer digging probably early next week. They're really just doing a bunch right now at this point, some RFPs to clarify just initial part of the process from the construction company back to the architect. But it's going smooth, nothing really to report. The church, whom you well know, we share the parking lot with, had some questions and some concerns about our use of the parking lot. We moved two storage buildings, some trailers and stuff like that into the parking area and it, they were concerned that they didn't have enough space for their parishioners on Sundays. We also, as part of the laydown area for the construction process, shut the entrance that we created for the other side of the parking lot. So they sent a letter and we immediately addressed their concerns as best we could. We moved everything excluding the two buildings that we moved into the parking lot. But we also, Lance Construction has been great to work with. At the end of the workday on Friday, they kind of turned their laydown fence so the parishioners can use that other exit in there. So that's really all to report, but trying to be a good neighbor and I think we've done so. Very good.
Anything else, Ed?
Oh, no, sir.
I didn't have any meetings. However, again, I was on the radio station on Tuesday with Eddie and, you know, it was a rowdy discussions. Of course, we talked about our lobbyist and growth in the county and the effects that it always has on us and what else was another topic that we talked about?
That's covered majority of it.
Majority of, yeah. So with that being said, that's about all that I have. We have board and commission vacancies. We need reappointment packet received from the Berkeley County Farmland Preservation Board from Jennifer Smith. Her term expires on September the 15th. Paul Smith, his term expires on the 31st of October, and Karen Burkhart on the 18th of October. Reappointment packets received from Steve DeRitter, Sean Wolford from the LEPC.
Yes, sir, I'd like to make that reappointment to both of them.
I have a motion to reappoint Stephen DeRitter and Sean Wolford to the LEPC.
Second, Ed.
In a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. The appointments for the farmland board recommended we move to. All three?
Win all three.
Jennifer Smith, Paul Smith, and Karen Burkhart.
Karen Burkhart and Paul Fred Johnson.
All righty, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. We need 9:55. Can you give us a little bit of an update on the RFP for the DRC security cameras? Is there any good opening on that? We want to go a little bit earlier.
So you have, so this is the final security cameras for the larger portion of the building. It correlates to about 42 cameras, the mounting equipment and so on and so forth.
Where do they go?
Pardon?
Where do they go?
Well, they go perimeter of the building, inside the building.
This building or the?
They report.
They report.
The new construction area. In all of the rooms which you perform treatment, there's cameras in every one of them. It's for protection of your staff as well as the protection of the recipient. The hallways, standard protocol that you've done in all of your buildings.
Where does the signal go to?
Where does it record to?
Yeah.
To the, the network recording device that, device that's in, it's actually in the judicial center. So we don't use the old coax cables where you've got a DVR in each building. It all goes back to the central computing center.
Oh, yeah.
In this complex. So there's fiber between all the buildings. Nothing special. We, when we did advertise, we advertised for a specific brand of camera because that's what we use, it works well with everything else. We had a couple of questions, so you have two responses, which I was excited to see. I was afraid we'd only see one, so there's two in there. That's, I don't know if that's more like say about security cameras.
Enough said.
Do we wait five minutes or?
You should.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh, Will, how long would it take for your state hearings for the 20?
He's got plenty of time.
Got plenty of time? Will will take you up here, how about that? 23 state hearings, is it still good?
Yes, that's correct, commissioners. Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, we have 23 states for final or interim settlements for the month of September 2024. All the states proposed for settlement here this morning are identical to those found in your read ahead. All estates proposed for settlement here this morning have been legally or actually noticed of their proposed pending status as prescribed by West Virginia law. Furthermore, my office has received no written notice of objections to date from any interested parties from the estates herein. Lastly, all claims of debt publicly filed against each of these estates have either been released as paid in part or in full by the creditors themselves, or the estate has been declared insolvent, meaning no probate assets remain to pay heirs, beneficiaries, and creditors alike. Without objection from any interested party present in the audience today, I ask for this commission's consideration for approval of the 23 estates for final or interim settlement in the month of September 2024.
You've heard the. Heard the request. Do I have a motion to approve the 23 estate settlements?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. That took a whole two minutes.
Well, way to dance fast, Will.
I'm sorry.
I can comment, I see Wayne Dunham here and Johnny Welsh. I know them both and, yeah, God bless them.
Rest their souls, that's for sure. Both of them or just the one?
Just the one.
Okay. All righty, no state hearings to schedule?
No, as I've stated kind of in previous hearings or meetings, excuse me, I tend to like to not put our administrators on the spot, so I'll contact them when I get a petition or a request for a hearing. And sometimes I'll just, when I understand that there's more than simple fact finding, when there's active conflict, I'll just go ahead and assign a fiduciary commissioner and spare you all that.
All right, thank you so much. I put this close to schedule again. I put another 35 seconds.
So you've got, you have the certification and publication for the RFP that was, that was also distributed to known vendors to provide in whom we've done business before for cameras placed on our website. So you've got two responses, you're closing up and you're going to close.
Close.
Yeah.
All righty.
We're not atomic clock synced, it could very well be 10:50 somewhere, 10:55 somewhere.
10:55 sometime, yeah, it could be somewhere out there in Atlanta.
Or 9:55.
I'm not purposely being slow to hit sort of schedule. It's just my normal fingers.
Say there's how many cameras, 42?
42.
Yep. How many times you tell them to make it the first page there? They never do it.
First page on the back of the package.
Yeah, appendix, whatever. Hey, hey, big listen. If you don't know where it's at, Mr. President, I will continue to try and look at it in this morning.
Well, one lump sum price, is that what you're looking for?
That's it.
And that is Trastate Micro Graphics Inc., DBA as Data Image Group, Baltimore Street, Hagerstown, Maryland. Now you're acting like me, Eddie.
Look all over the place for it.
Naked adventure, those blue glasses. I'd yell too.
Okay, this is for Document Solutions at, what's that, Cumberland? At Cumberland, Maryland, yeah, I wasn't going to pronounce the street. The total amount is $27,177.0. And that concludes our bids. I'm sure our IT specialist will let us know which ones we're going to get.
They will for sure.
All right. And we're back to Mr. Will Lawrenson, fiduciary supervisor, state hearing for Francis T. Rasel. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Rasel.
Rasel, I'm sorry.
Yes, we do have the estate hearing for Francis Rasel. Mr. Rasel passed away on December 10th, 2023, test date, a resident of Berkeley County. On April 11th, 2024, four months after the decedent's passing, Stephen Palmer Smith, respondent in the instant matter, presented my office with a seemingly valid original last will and testament. Upon inspection, my office noted that Mr. Smith was not the first named executor, but rather the alternate executor. The first named executor is the petitioner, Mr. Stephen Frame, who is here this morning. Typically, in such a case where the presenter of the will is not the first named executor, my office would require a nomination waiver signature form from the first named executor or a declaration that the first named executor has since passed away. However, for efficiency's sake, after 30 days from the decedent's passing, my office can infer a waiver, given that the named executor failed to qualify within those first 30 days. On July 18th, 2024, Mr. Frame, by counsel, Mr. Michael Bush, filed a petition to remove Mr. Smith as acting executor for the estate of Francis Rasel. In his petition, Mr. Frame chiefly argued that he had inadequate notice of his role as executor and would have fulfilled his role if he had known, had actual knowledge of his appointment. In further support of his petition, Mr. Frame, again by counsel, presented affidavits of support of Mr. Frame's petition, signed and attested by Terry Jeffrey Connet, the decedent's cousin and residual beneficiary under the will, as well as Matthew Miller, a representative for the Fellowship of Christian Athletes at the Martinsburg High School, yet another beneficiary of the decedent's will. Each affidavit is also attached to your read ahead. If they so wish, I ask the petitioner now to speak to their petition if they so desire.
Mr. Bush, good to see you this morning.
Good morning. Members of the commission, good morning. My name is Michael Bush. I'm here in my capacity as an attorney, and it's my privilege to represent Mr. Stephen Frame in this matter, who is the named personal representative in the last will and testament of Francis Rasel, also known as Mick, you might hear me reference. As Mr. Lawrenson aptly pointed out, that Mr. Frame is the first appointed personal representative of Mr. Rasel's estate. As such, there are procedural safeguards that are in place under state statute, which would provide certain notices to be required and provided to those named representatives so that they can fulfill the testator's intent. Namely, there are two procedural safeguards that were not applied in this case. The first one being West Virginia Code 4151, indicating that the custodian of the will shall give it to the clerk or the named executor within 30 days after the decedent's passing. The appointed representative, who is the successor representative in this case, failed to do that. He was the custodian of the will upon our information and belief. After all, he presented the original will for probate, and that original will was not provided to my client. So my client did not have the opportunity to provide that original will so that he may be appointed. The second being West Virginia Code 4152, that when such will is presented to the clerk's office, that the personal representative would be notified and the beneficiaries would be notified and that the will would be held until proceedings may occur on the probate of that will. That did not occur in this case. So in conclusion, Mr. Rasel, the decedent's selection of my client, Mr. Frame, is the paramount concern. We want to uphold the intent of the decedent. But due to these procedural deficiencies, Mr. Frame was denied the opportunity. Appointment of Mr. Frame as the rightful representative, as we are asking today, upholds the decedent's intent, does not prejudice the estate or any beneficiary. In fact, as I've provided, two of the beneficiaries have submitted affidavits in support. Mr. Frame is ready to serve, and there will be no further delay in the administration of this estate. Mr. Frame is qualified as a retired school teacher, actively involved in the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, a soccer dad, and a friend of the, a friend of the decedent. And so for those reasons, I ask this commission to remove Mr. Smith as the successor, well, as the representative in this case, as he was only named the successor representative. And I ask this commission to appoint my client, Mr. Frame, as the personal representative in support of the decedent's intent and his will.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
If Mr. Smith or any representative of Mr. Smith is present, I'm happy to allow them to respond.
Without a.
I assume Mr. Smith was notified.
Absolutely. Mr. Smith, you know, contextually, Mr. Smith did contact my office via telephone, asking basically, you know, the estate, technically speaking, is delinquent in its filing of the appraisement. And my staff simply told him, you know, basically wait until this commission acts to do anything further, just basically put on hold until this commission acts. So yes, he was made aware of these proceedings as well as the petition that we're hearing on today. Without anything further from any interested parties in the audience, I ask for this commission's consideration in the removal of Stephen Smith as the personal representative for the estate of Francis T. Rasel.
Mr. President, I do have a question. Mr. Bush brought out two specific sections of the code.
Indeed.
Where the holder of the, of the will should make notification to your office. And that did not happen.
That is correct.
And then the second one was that your office did not notify. Is that?
That is correct. So in typical cases, especially where the will has been presented to my office within the first 30 days, as is codified, my office will take a look at the will, ensure that the presenter of the will is the indeed named executor. And if they are not, quite right, we need to give notice to the named executor to give him ample opportunity to serve if they so desire. That did not happen. Four months had passed since the decedent's passing in December, and then in April, when the, the personal representative presented the will. As stated, my office infers waiver in such a case, just for efficiency's sake. This estate had been kind of in limbo for a period of a quarter of a year. And so in cases such as these, my office infers a waiver, saying basically, given the amount of time that had passed, and this person was a successor named personal representative, we took the will and on its face value of Mr. Smith, we qualified him. That obviously, in this particular case, should not have occurred, given that Mr. Frame did indeed wish to serve, and that was a material fact and a failure on my office, indeed.
Thank you. You've heard the ask. For this motion, we'll need a motion to remove Stephen T. Smith as current executor?
That is correct.
So I need a motion to remove Mr. Smith. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. And need a motion to appoint Stephen Frame?
That is correct.
To, to be the executor of Mr. Rasel's will or estate. ...to be the executor of Mr. Raisel's will or estate. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries, sir.
Given the specific factual nature of this case, I will prepare an order. Actually, Mr. Bush has been good enough to propose an order for this commission, and I will, I imagine I will heavily supplement from his proposed order and have that for your signature by latest by the end of business tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Mr. Lawrenson, if I may, as part of that order, within that order requires an interim accounting of Mr. Smith, just to identify any... We don't believe there's been any activity in the estate, but just to identify any activity that has occurred under his...
That is absolutely fair. And in any removal or change of petition of personal representatives in an estate, that's a common practice. I would require, if any action had been taken for any probate assets, A, identify what those assets are; B, what have you done with them slash where are they presently? And see what remains. Thank you.
Uh, Will? Come on up. Have to come up and state your name for the record?
My name is Suzette Nicholas. I'm speaking on behalf of Brendan Nicholas, who is also... Well, Brendan is to receive a car from Mick. My question... My question... My question is, what if something has occurred with the car? Or I'm asking on behalf of my seventeen-year-old son, who is interested in this car. What if we find that through all of this time, that that car has sat vacant, has sat not being run, being whatever goes into a car in normal maintenance? What if that car is no longer in drivable condition, et cetera? Then what happens? And I'm just curious about that, because I'm going to have to answer to my seventeen-year-old when I go home.
To answer your question directly, the personal representative is personally liable for all probate assets. If the car was drivable and longer due to inaction or what have you, that personal liability is...
I know at the time of Mick's death that that car was... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Anything else? Are we all good?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for putting that out. Got a call for the question? Yeah, okay. Where are we at? Chief Burnett? Do you have a...
He's waiting on somebody else.
Yeah. I think he's ready for this one. Are you ready for this one, chief?
Thanks, officer.
All righty.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, we're here to ask to remove an RFP that was submitted back in July. The bid came in with more money than basically what we had. So we're asking to go ahead and pull that.
Reject all bids, sir. Just asked to reject the... Need a motion to reject the bid for the RFP, remote operated vehicle. There were three bids. Three bids?
Yes, sir, there's three bids.
To remove all three or to reject all three?
Reject all three, sir.
Okay, need a motion to reject all three bids for the... Is it underwater drone?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Oh, second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries, sir.
Thank you, y'all.
That was easy enough. Uh, let's see.
Early break?
Huh?
Early break?
Yeah, let's take a little break here real quick.
We're back in session. Next on the agenda is Sheriff Rob Blair. Update on Sheriff's Tax Office done building relocation.
Tell us what you think.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for-
Unless it's bad.
Unless it's bad. We then cut the mic on.
Thank you for having me today. Obviously, I don't know what it was like before the transition was made before I was here, but I've made some inquiries as far as where they're at now. And what I've found is the out front lobby is very much appreciated with the space that they have for taxpayers or citizens coming in to deal with our tax deputies paying their taxes is a lot more accessible. Being on this, the ground floor, we're not on the ground, the ground floor with-
First floor.
Yes, with the assessor's office. They don't have the stairs to contend with. Of course, you have an elevator, but it's a lot more accessible having everyone in that area. Another thing that I've been told that they're very appreciative of is Mike Lang's security officer in the lobby. That means a lot to everyone for the security in the building. The extra file storage room that was provided is a great benefit because they're obviously with taxes, we have a lot of files to deal with. I think that's up here on the second floor.
It's on the twelfth floor over there.
Third floor?
Okay. And a half floor.
Half?
It's half between the first, second, and third.
It's the tweeny floor.
It is.
And I'd also like to say that I'd give a shout out to your maintenance crew, the facility guys. When we have a problem, we just put in a ticker, give them a call, they respond. We had some lighting issues and they came right in and fixed it. But I don't know if there's anything I'm missing. Lisa French.
Come on up, Lisa. Tell us what you're thinking.
Good morning.
The overall office is a great office. It's very open and fresh. So, and we're not on top of each other, especially out front. They've gotten a lot more space. The office is just much nicer. So, we appreciate it.
That's what we, you know, we'll try to please the constituents, to do the best that we can for them and to make it an enjoyable trip instead of a, not so enjoyable.
How's the temperature control there?
So, it's, it's good. Sometimes it's cold, sometimes it's hot. So, it's fine.
Well, we like it cold.
I don't know. I think they're telling us something up here with this marble slab.
That's Stephen Penny.
That's Stephen Penny.
Stephen Penny.
Well, the marble slab just, I'm afraid they're just trying to get me closer to it at Brown's or something.
I find the temperature control, I'm not going to please everyone.
That's right.
That's true.
Here's the whole key. When you're cold, you can put more clothing on. And when you're hot, you can't take it all off.
Right. I'm hot right now. So.
So, cold is better.
No, it's not. I'm not a cold weather person anymore. And I'll deal with that.
What I think's nice is that when you, the appearance of the public, and before up here, they're standing out in the hall all the time. You know, it's like, but Lord, you know, it's just, but just getting people out of them.
A lot more space there.
Yeah.
And the customers really do enjoy not having to go upstairs or find the elevator because it was a long walk to get to that elevator for our handicaps.
I have actually a funny story. All the way over here, a couple showed up to Sheriff's Office, wanted to pay their taxes. I said, "Follow me." I brought him right to it. Back and right to it. Good. After this morning.
Lisa, we appreciate you and your staff and Barb's cooperation in that move. It's, it took some patience to accomplish that, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, they always did say you got to break a few eggs to make an omelet. And I think we got a pretty good omelet here.
Well, I mean, we gave them a shower in Glac Hall. They took a small shower one day. I mean-
Oh, yeah.
So-
Karen did.
Let me just tell you, the person involved from this from the beginning, all of them have been wonderful. There hasn't been one officer, Mr. Hess is sitting there. Everyone has been great, you know, in the instances where we're pouring, we're pouring stuff on their head, or we move them once and like, well, no, that won't move it here. We had not one person, not one person, from an elected official to a department head to just an end user complained, not one time. They've been awesome.
Well, if they can complain internally, that's all right.
Just long as they never come out of the doors.
All right.
Speaking of eggs, we cracked over a thousand of them on Monday at his work.
A thousand?
Ninety dozen times twelve.
Wow.
It was a good time.
Sheriff was there serving.
Yeah, yes, he was.
Did a great job.
You know, we were on the radio.
Larry Bess was there washing, washing up the silverware.
It's really turning into like a community social event.
People show up and just start talking.
It's a Berkeley County reunion.
It is, yeah.
Yep. All right. Well, thank you all so much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Hess. Can you lead us in a little bit on how your renovations went?
He's got all the guns passed there.
Good morning, sir. Good to see you again. Yeah, well, I could, about everything I want to say. But no, it's, it's great. Everything's new. We got new desks. We've got new, everything's new. So, it's great. It was a long process, obviously. I mean, we went through a lot and still have things fall on our head. But, you know, we, you know, it's, it's just about over with now. But I got to repeat what he said with Jack and the maintenance crew. Awesome. They come in there, then move those big cabinets and without, we didn't have to unload any of that stuff. All that, moved them with all that stuff, you know, it's great. But from what I hear from the employees, we used to have bathrooms. We don't have bathrooms now. That's one complaint that I hear from, from the employees. But other than that, everybody loves it. I mean, it's like it's roomy. We've got, especially those cubicles, those cubicles are huge. You could actually get two people in those cubicles if you want to. You can get two desks, you can get two chairs in there.
If we need to double the staff.
You could actually do that.
They're in total hands while they type.
You could actually do that. And, but, but, yeah, it's great. I mean, everybody likes it. It's roomy. I think with us getting rid of those retrievers, I don't think, I guess you sold them or whatever.
They're gone.
They're gone. I noticed they were gone. But I think it actually, it slowed up the, or speeded up the process with the customers because they don't have to get up and go to the retrievers and pull files, then go back and put them back in there, you know. They're just right in the computer now. We scanned everything through the winter, you know.
Wow.
And all it done. Yeah, we had nineteen scanners running through the winter and did over sixty thousand files, five years of them, of everyone with a file. Got them all scanned in. So, and I think that helps with the lines. I've noticed the lines aren't quite as long because we were upstairs that during July and August, man, they were sometimes around the corner. But I think that helped out a lot there. But-
That was the intent, to make it easier.
Yeah. And like Sheriff Blair says, everything's on the first floor. You come in and you can pay your ambulance bill, your fire bill, and come to the assessor, pay your tax bill. It's all right there. So, it's, I think it's going to turn out great. It is great. I mean, we have no complaints other than, I think, what was it? We don't have a sink. And I know there's no drain lines. I mean, we're on the first floors, you know. So, but we don't, we have to go somewhere to wash our cup out somewhere, but coffee cup.
For the record, we do have employee bathrooms that are locked. They just don't have in-suite bathrooms. And we did treat them really well. When the assessor moved downstairs, the space that they left, the carpet that was up there was tacked down. So, it was nice if you were in Larry's office or down there for like two weeks. They were upstairs. Instead of pulling the tax, they just decided to drive them all down. And I think there was many tacks per foot as Steve had eggs on Labor Day.
I bet.
You should have heard it. It was horrible. It was bad, wasn't it, Larry?
It's a rat type tack.
Yep.
No, but, but again, not one complaint. They did not complain. Larry called and they handled it. It was awesome.
Well, anytime we needed anything, the maintenance crew or Gary or whatever, they were right on. So, we're very happy.
Any remarks from customers coming in? Have they?
Oh, yeah. They, they say, they pretty much say the same thing from what I can, what I can hear. But, yeah, it's, it's nice. It's roomy. Yeah. Everybody's happy, I think.
Keep it that away. That's great. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? That's good. All right. Thank you, sir. Thanks for the update. Will Lawrence, do you want to see us again?
Welcome again.
How was your update post date?
Well, I would love, I'm the first guy to say, I, I'm kidding. It's, it's wonderful. It, it really is. Our old office space was less akin to a place that you're going to do something, you know, a legal process and more akin to a McDonald's. You would walk up to the counter, ring a bell, and you would be doing this very complicated, very emotional thing. And you'd have to deal with people right at your back. And sometimes we'd have to do it in the hallway, this echoey hallway. You'd talk to your family and, you know, talk about somebody who'd passed away and their money and their stuff. And they don't have to do that anymore. We have a fantastic space. We have a great, open, you know, waiting room so that we can handle multiple people at multiple times. And if, if you need to, you know, kind of wait for a staffer to come and help you, it's not like you're right on top of somebody else who's talking about something very quite sensitive. We have our, our conference room is absolutely incredible, you know, and as, as others have said, you know, maintenance, our move was pretty seamless. I mean, we weren't, we weren't coming from, you know, changing floors or anything. We were coming from up the hall. So, that helped. And also, we were pleasant in this, I was pleasantly surprised in the sense that we could get rid of all of the things that we didn't need anymore, like a typewriter and like our metal-
What? You just calm down there, buddy.
And I did not enjoy having that. You know, we, we also had several, I mean, it's the inevitable conclusion to having several people who were, I mean, a predecessor who was there for decades. I mean, it just, you know, you save stuff and that's okay. But when you start to ask yourself as a new supervisor of like, what is it that we actually look at and need? Very little of that stuff made it over, which was kind of nice. Yeah. We also have, you know, a great storage space up at the clerk's office where my office was pre 2019. There were several boxes marked fiduciary that we're happily going through now. And hopefully, within my lifetime, we will get through them all.
Well, for your sake, I hope we do too.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I have.
I don't want them to end your career.
Well, that's, you know, one way or another, it's going to end. So, anyway. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Will. All right. Just a little leak.
They're not here yet.
They're not here yet. Chad, you're here. You have the county administrator federal probation treatment facility.
Yes. I'm here today. Director Sya is with me. Exciting news at the day report center. Their success continues to attract other people to them. They were approached by the federal probation division to help offer treatment services to enroll these in that program. And they were awarded the contract for 2025. Tim can speak a little bit more to the details of how that is going to affect their operations. But in a nutshell, they're expecting about twenty-nine new participants into their treatment program when the federal fiscal year starts on October one. That is going to bring approximately $138,000 of billables and recoverable monies. That is going to bring approximately $138,000 of billables and recoverable monies to that program, and it is going to require most likely the hiring of a new therapist to help achieve that. Of course, it would be $93,591 as they ask for that therapist, but the good news is that that money will be totally recoverable from, or covered by the recovered monies from billing of everything. Tim, would you like to speak more to how that program is going to affect your operations? If approved for the hiring, Tim does have plans to delay the hiring until he's had an active, but the real-
I think he's just trying to fill up that new building.
Is he?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Watching.
The way, I don't know how many people live in Berkeley County who are on federal probation, but the probation officers require that they, they have a history of substance abuse, mental health issues, they be involved in treatment. Specifically, what they want is just individual therapy by licensed masters level clinician.
Who's doing the program now, or is anybody-
I don't know. They, they, they put this out as a request for proposals every, every three years, and we were awarded the contract. So, what I expect is that about twenty-nine, maybe thirty people on October 1 are gonna be ready to report to the Day Report Center on a weekly basis for individual therapy, from group work as well.
The three-year contract then, is what you're saying?
They start off, they start off with one year, and then if they're pleased with the services, they continue it on, and then goes from there.
Are we locked in at that price for three years, or could they pay us a bit higher? Or the one year?
So, what, what I proposed to them was that we, was that they pay us the Medicaid billable rate, which I think is appropriate, and yes, that we're locked in, if you will.
So, it comes through them and they recollect from Medicare, Medicaid?
No, they, they pay directly.
Medicaid pays us directly.
Yeah, we don't have to do any insurance billing with this population, they would pay directly for the services. Yeah. And like Chad said, I, I expect that I'm gonna need, need to hire an additional therapist. Starting off, though, I'm gonna use one of my current therapists just to gauge the numbers and feel confident that it's gonna more than pay for the salary of the therapist, or I pulled the trigger on one. However, starting that process now would be helpful.
Get you, get you a little bit of a head start.
They truly are asking for a therapist position, so it's the motion to approve the therapist, cover the additional duties.
Okay. Heard they ask, they'll have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the hiring of another therapist.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, mugging carries. There you go.
Tim, how, how, how do you feel the new building's looking?
It's not happening fast enough. No, it's great, I don't, if, if you have an opportunity, go wander over there and check it out.
Well-
It's gonna be nice.
Currently, the one floor is vacant, is that?
The second.
Second floor.
You have a use for it yet?
The second floor? No.
Not yet. Oh, okay.
Not yet.
Yeah, but you can see the wheels turning.
Yeah, more-
Who's an ass?
More, more than half of the offices on the third floor are gonna be filled as soon as we're able to move in, because I have, I have staff there sharing space, I have a couple people floating that literally don't have a, a permanent desk right now. So, more than half of those offices are gonna be filled immediately, and-
If you're ever in that facility, it is a hustle and bustle from the foyer back. There's always somebody moving over there. It's busy. Well organized, well maintained, and well used. Thank you.
We need tile.
Tile?
Tile.
Okay.
Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hedgesville Little League, are you here?
Yes.
All right, come on up. How you doing this morning?
Pretty good, yourself?
Good, good.
So, I'm Brad Runkles with Hedgesville Little League, here to talk about the lease in the Allensville project.
I think a read ahead was a little bit given to us by, by Steve, was it last week or week before you told us a little bit about it?
Yeah.
And you got a plan here that we kind of got a little bit of on our page, on a read ahead.
I don't think so.
Picture?
Got a picture.
Do you?
Yeah.
A little map.
Okay. Does it look familiar?
Yes, sir, that's what I have here, this is just a beat up working copy.
Okay.
And because the property is so narrow, that's why the fields had to be aligned like they are. Normally, you do like a ore field thing, you know-
Cluster.
Yeah, cluster, but, but what's nice about it is you have the entrance there and one way driving through there, plenty of parking spaces, outfield is where you point them, away from all the people, and hopefully, we'll get highways to get an exit out, so it'll just be one way in.
So, this down here is the parking, is that what you're saying?
That's the parking, yep. Diagonal parking all the way through the whole length of the property. That particular piece is about twenty-six acres, I think, if I'm wrong, yeah.
Yeah, ideally, it'd be great if you could do the clover league, like the four fields where they all come back, but that's not-
That's not gonna happen.
They'd be awful small fields.
What are these fields?
T-ball fields.
What are these fields, are they baseball, softball?
So, the four fields would be a baseball, softball, could interchange, and then the one would be a multipurpose for football, soccer.
Yeah, yeah.
And the whole reason for the wanting to do it is, the league's growing so fast, and right now, we don't have fields that are controlled by Hedgesville Little League. We work with the high school, but anytime the high school has a game, the whole complex, which includes the Little League field, the minor field, the T-ball field, the junior, senior field, which is the high school field, anytime the high school's doing something, that whole complex is shut down. Same with the girls softball. Anytime the girls softball high school is doing anything, you know, the field there by the high school and then the upper field, whole complex is shut off. So, if they have a rain out and want to make up a game on Thursday, they have rights and they just-
Push you out.
Push you out.
Oh, yeah. Well- I was involved in that league back from the very beginning, and we built the first field there on the high school complex because the land was free and it's just made it feasible. But they're scattered around some places, and now with the girls softball incorporated into it, we have over six hundred, some kids now.
Six eighty-six, I believe.
Yeah, six eighty-six, and it's growing every year. In comparison, Martinsburg Little League's down to a couple hundred kids, but I understand. Of course, they don't have girls softball, it's separate.
Separate, yeah.
Now, Berkeley has their own complex all together, where all the fields are together. Martinsburg has Oatsdale, where all the fields are together. Hedgesville, they're playing at the girls softball field down by the high school, they're playing at the, where the middle school is, they're playing back at Rooney Park, and so, you know, they, it's-
Given any day, they're everywhere.
It's just a chaos, and, I mean, it's, at least there's facilities, but this is something that's really needed for this area.
How long would it take you to put these fields in?
Well, whenever the money's available. It's all about money, you know?
Everything's about the money.
Yeah, it is, and hopefully, I know with the league, and I'm sorry for talking so much, Brad, but you understand where I'm coming from. We, I've been involved with this from day one, was, I was at the park system, of course, when the land was turned over to us, and we were talking about the project, and there's, there's fifty more acres on the other side of the tracks, it's, it's passive recreation, maybe, but there's no access to it, but this has access to it right between Allensville Road and the tracks. It's something that's been needed out there. You, you can't build enough athletic fields in this county right now to satisfy the need. This will say, it'll, it'll centralize them, and then they'll be in control where, you know, the school can't come in and say, "Well, you're not playing here today, we are," you know? But all those fields will still be used, though, whether it's for practices or even for games at times, but they need their own complex, and I think this is a way that we can try to get it done. It'll have to be done in phases, though, is what I'm saying, Jim, and, and maybe one field at a time, you know, and you just keep growing. They also, which is really neat, are putting in, nothing to do with baseball, and proposing a, just a turf area for soccer, football, whatever, so other entities can utilize the property as well, not just little-
That's what I was about to ask, what's the square field, was it soccer or something?
Yeah, yeah, and that's needed, too. There's, there's just so much need, but-
So, just looking here, the ask is, is for the, for the county to enter into an agreement?
Long-term lease.
Long-term lease?
The park system has approved, right Eddie, that the, because, you know, initially, it was gonna be a park possibly, but they came to the park board and asked for that land for, and they approved it, but since the county owns the property-
Right.
The lease probably would be with us then, right Anthony, so obviously, we own the properties. But, you know, you don't want to make an investment there of millions of dollars eventually, where the progress of work comes, and then five years from now, a new commission comes in and said, "Oh, by the way, you're not, you can't have his property anymore, we're gonna use it." We're just trying to protect that investment.
I, I, I think it's a wonderful opportunity. I know that Hedgesville Little League has done a really good job for a long period of time, and I know you've got some growing pains, and that, that land has sat for many, many years, whenever you guys worked out that agreement, I guess LCS?
With, well, with Waste Management, potentially, it became Waste Management.
And it's, it'd be, it'd be really a great thing to see this opened up and kids playing, kids playing ball on it.
I remember the day it was given to us by LCS, or Waste Management, so.
Well, I think that's-
So, it's sat for ten years?
We want to call it, we want to protect the history of the place, was the, it was the old brickyard, the North Mountain Brickyard, what it was.
Probably could dig up enough bricks to build the concession stand and dugouts.
On the other side of the road, there's millions of them buried over there, I can tell you, on the other side of the tracks, but-
I'm sure.
My grandfather worked there, I had uncle worked, several uncles that worked there, he was a big employer at one time, and hopefully, we can preserve the history, and I'm hoping they'll name the complex the Brickyard, both the Brickyard, Camden Yards, the Brickyard, but it'd be very appropriate.
Indianapolis may-
Have some interpretive exhibits about the history of the place.
Yeah, Indianapolis may question you on that.
Let's see, that's the Brickyard 500.
Yeah.
So, we can, the Brickyard 500.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
Mr. President, if it's-
Yes, sir.
If it's the will of the commission just to give consensus that they could work with your legal team-
Come up with the agreement.
And they come back with the lease for you to sign at a later date.
I think that's the consensus here.
Oh, yeah.
To go ahead and proceed and get with legal, and we'll, we'll make it official with the, with the terms of the agreement, how's that?
Sounds good. So, what does that mean, like, next step?
Just get with Anthony?
Get with Anthony, right there.
And you, you and your, your, your group will come up with your, your request, get it all on paper, and the commission will, you'll come back and get it signed.
Once everybody agrees to the agreement or the, the terms, then it comes back to us and then we'll-
Is there a reasonable term to ask for?
Ninety-nine years.
Ninety-nine years.
Okay, I mean, that's what I was thinking, but I didn't want to throw that out, and you guys think, "Oh my, this guy's lost his mind."
Well, we all have, but we don't think that's too bad.
Yeah, there's, there's thoughts about that, of course, long-term, you know, but, but the thing would be, if, I, I think there would be things in there to protect the county that if the league doesn't meet certain, you know what I'm saying, levels of expectation, then it could revert back to the county at some point, because, you know, who knows, ten years from now, they may abandon it and go somewhere else, and then, so there, there